...Moffel Township Education Administration's Office Building, Moffel Public School Website, and advertising Daily Record.
Thank you. I see we have a high school representative. Shannon, please give your report. Thank you for coming.
So, on the sports front, on March 7th through 9th, senior wrestler Ethan Fox and junior wrestler Anthony Fano traveled to Boardwalk Hall in Atlantic City for the NJAIA State Wrestling Tournament. Ethan took top sixteen with a win in the consolation round. And recently, senior Michael Van Coven was named the football scholar athlete for MTHS by Morris County Chapter of the National Football Foundation and College Hall of Fame. Michael will represent MTHS at the dinner honoring award winners on April 9th. Regarding clubs, on March 11th, the MTHS Science Olympiad Team participated in the state tournament and won medals in four events. Our teams took second in compound machines, third in anatomy and physiology, fourth in Mission Possible, and fifth in Designer Jeans. On March 15th, several additional members of the MTHS forensics team qualified to compete at the national tournament. Junior Jay Serat qualified in DX, Noah Oneflash qualified in OO, and Senior Josh Feldman qualified in HI. The national forensics tournament will take place in Overland Park, Kansas this year. Also, this past weekend at Dec of States, Moffel had a huge success. Fifty-five students finals in a variety of categories in both team and individual competition. Twenty-six students were national qualifiers and will be competing at the national competition in Atlanta, Georgia. Regarding the school, junior Minke Hong was selected for the all-state orchestra ensemble. Minke competed with the top five finalists across the entire state, each selected from their own region's honors orchestra. The Student Activities Council recently donated a brand-new stage auditorium curtain to the school. The curtain was officially installed on March 5th in the Dr. Robert O. Stafford Auditorium. This is the second major project in as many months in an effort to renovate the auditorium. The stage floor was sanded and stained in early February. And the MTHS Endrama Club held the Spring Musical this past weekend, performing The Wizard of Oz. The cast included a fantastic job with multiple shows selling out. And for future, and I still forward to, the Senior banquet will take place next Friday on March 28th on an evening cruise where I'm heading.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Any questions for Shannon? I'll just say that I saw some board members at the Drama Club Musical, Wizard of Oz, and it was a wonderful production. And what was so spectacular was the introduction of having our elementary school children play munchkins. Carmella was there, I saw Mike there. I mean, four performances. I'm sure there were other board members who attended. But it was just really great. And even the, they kind of constructed the stage around the orchestra. So, so professional.
That was really cool.
Yeah. And there's a lot of excitement over the floor and the curtains. So, thank you. Matt?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so many wonderful things you're talking about and seeing back what sounds like it almost sounds like it might even be oversupplied with so many people that wanted to attend this year. What a great idea. But the curtains in the auditorium are something that needs to be done. So, you know, please bring back our thanks to the SAC for doing that. And that goes hand-in-hand with some of the other improvements that seem to be on the budget that is going, that are going to move forward as well. So, we look forward to that room being so much better than it has been.
It smells fresh. Thank you, Shannon. We have a very busy agenda, so we'll move right to the superintendent's reports.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. The first part of my remarks I'd like to talk about this evening is the high school athletic field. Everyone is aware that the Board of Education is in the process of relocating the athletic fields that right now are behind our middle school to our high school. And Jim Tevis has been hard at work. We have, through a process, arrived at the engineering firm who will be doing the equipment work for us. And we've been involving all of the individuals from around the district who have vested interest in terms of these athletic fields, including our high school administration, our athletic director, and coaches of these sports that could be affected by the work on the fields. The process now for the surveying is starting to take place at this time. And if weather is permitting, hopefully, we can make very, very good progress toward the work on these fields and begin them as soon as possible after the spring sport season have ended. What we hope to do is provide a turf baseball field, a second girl softball field, which will also be turf. So, we'll have two girls softball fields on the property. And a multipurpose field that would be in the turf portion of the boys varsity baseball outfield. So, making opportunities for many more sports on this turf field possible. So, we feel very good about the progress timetable right now, and hopefully, that will move ahead nicely. Jim, if you want to make any remarks about that?
Just work is actually already started on the design concepts, and as a matter of fact, some survey work is actually going to be commencing tomorrow. So, you're actually going to see some people out in the field and doing some testing and surveying to move the process along. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from Board of Education members?
Any timetable's to run the fields, but actually be available for users, not just way too far in advance?
You mean in terms of the completion date?
Yes.
I don't think we have that any sort of set way yet. We're certainly hoping by early fall that'll be our goal. Okay. The other, the other topic in my remarks tonight are school calendars for the 2014, 2015, and the following school year, 2015-16. As everyone is aware, this year, we experienced eight snow days, and that has brought a lot of concern with regard to the almost elimination of our spring break. Right now, we're using April 14, 15, and 16 as our makeup days. This has presented issues for our students, particularly seniors, for families going on vacation, for teachers with plans. And, and we're doing our best to get through this year under these circumstances. We do know that based on at least the four short years I've spent in the district, that three out of the four years, we've had unusual weather. Whether it's been an October snowstorm, which has caused the community to lose power for a week, or a hurricane, and now finally, this year with eight snow days, we do continue to have some unusual weather. And so, as we think about the calendar for the next two years, we'd like to do some pre-planning and perhaps keep ourselves out of this predicament. The Board approved the calendars for the next two years on November 4th, 2013, so the calendars for next year and the year after have been approved. But I will, at our next Board of Education meeting, ask the Board to approve some changes in these calendars to, in fact, add more snow days into the calendar and thus allow us to do our best to preserve the spring break without this kind of concern coming up again. I want to thank representatives from the Moffel Township Education Association, who I met with regarding the calendar. I want to thank our President's Council, who literally at a moment's notice gathered with me to talk about these possibilities. And I do have some, some calendar changes I would like to put out to the Board of Education. Again, not looking forward to the recommendation tonight, but would put that in form of resolution for the following meeting. And so, here's what I propose for the 2014-15 school calendar. Very simply, for next year, right now, we have the last day of school. Propose for Thursday, June 18th, we would simply add three more school days onto the end of that calendar. Thus, going to school on Friday, the 19th, Monday, the 22nd, and Tuesday, the 23rd of June, making June 23rd the last day of school and the day of graduation, and the day also project graduation. So, again, very simply, add three more days to the end of the school year of June, increasing our snow days from four to seven. And snow days that are unused as we approach the end of the year, based on our teacher's contract, would be returned around Memorial Day weekend. So, that's the proposal for next year's calendar. The proposal for the 2015-2016 school calendar does something similar. It's just a slight change, and this has to do with how the end of the year falls. The Parents, the Parents Council, President's Council will notice that there's a change, a slight change from the concept that we spoke about, but it's close in concept. What we would do there is we would take the day off that we were going to have on Martin Luther King Junior's birthday, which is January 18th. That would become a day of construction. And so, students would go to school that day. That day was going to be a professional development day for teachers. We would instead move that professional development day to President's Day, which is February 22nd. So, that would, in fact, help us gain one additional snow day. The students would go to school on that January 18th day. We would still have our third professional development day, as I said, on February 22nd. And we would extend the school year by two days. So, we were supposed to end on Tuesday, June 21st. We've now ended on Thursday, June 23rd, get two days there, and thus also have an additional three days handed on to the four. And again, have seven snow days in the calendar. And again, unused days based on our teacher's contract would be given back if we didn't use them around Memorial Day weekend. So, both years, we would have seven snow days in the calendar. Any questions from the Board? So, it would be my hope that this would alleviate some of the stress and pressure connected to this. Certainly, if we still had to go beyond the seven days, we would eed back into the spring break, but hopefully, that would be unlikely to happen. Okay. So, no questions. I'll move ahead to our presentations. And the first one is a presentation by our music students, and I want to just briefly introduce that. This is Music in Our Schools Month, and I'm going to let someone else talk more about that in a moment. But if I can draw your attention back to January, which in the state of New Jersey is Board Recognition Month, we had planned to, in fact, have some of our musicians perform before the Board in January to help celebrate Board Recognition Month. But unfortunately, we had a snow day. So, our Board never got to enjoy that and have that recognition for them. So, I asked Mr. Ed Fleishman, our supervisor of the arts, if he might not want to reschedule that. And he had a wonderful idea, connected with Music in Our Schools Month. So, enough of my talking. Ed, I've introduced you, and I was gonna say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Freed. Good evening, everyone, Board of Education members, administration members, students, and parents. March is Music in Our Schools Month, a national celebration. It's sponsored by the National Association, National Association for Music Education, which is the largest advocacy and support group for music educators in both public and private schools in America, and it happens every month. So, we thought it'd be nice to celebrate Music in Our Schools Month in addition to all the performances that are going on in our schools with three student groups. We have wonderful students here from Zorn Middle School and from Moffel Township High School. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce, this is Adrius Nobile, who is our woodmont band director. She's been in the district for eight years, and she also is the assistant concert band director at the middle school. And she has a wonderful flute choir that meets after school with us.
On Tuesdays.
Tuesdays. And they're gonna come and play Shepherd's Tale.
As for coming up, I'll introduce to you the girls. This is Emma Bang. Abby Zoo. And Erin Wire is not here. She's usually here, you can listen, but I'm going to attempt to play some of her part and conduct it this evening, so who knows? This is Natalie Corella, Eva Werheim, Dinky Yaso, Madeline So, Julie, oh, that's her mixed up. Okay. I intend to appreciate.
Yoda, quick change here.
Thank you, girls. That was beautiful.
Thanks, everybody.
The flute choir is interesting because we have the regular flute, the bass flute, the alto flute, a lot of different groups. Next up, we have a very brave young man, Mr. Joey Chung. He's a sophomore at Moffel. Joey plays the concert man, and he also spends every Saturday at Manhattan School of Music Pre-College. He is playing the A Corps for us, the solo de concours by Monet. This is for Farina and...
I don't get it.
Okay. Okay. We'll see Joey at our upcoming spring concert with his organization, Concert Band. And last, but certainly not least, we have Mr. Kevin Lynch, our first-year, first-year in education, and first-year here at Moffel. High school choral teacher, outstanding job, directs the concert choir. In the evening, has three ensembles, a chamber choir, as well as a Manson Wins ensemble. He was the vocal music director for Outstanding Student, Wizard of Oz. Mr. Lynch, you can tell us where the, what the members of the concert choir are.
We are going to be singing the Alma mater, the classical alma mater.
The summer hills are forest green, the winter's purest white. A legacy in knowledge of mind and spirit too. Unselfish friendships, memories dear. All this and more from you. And so, dear Alma mater, our steadfast pledge will be integrity in all our deeds with true To strive for peace and justice and sacred liberty. Dear Alma mater, Montville, our gratitude to thee. Amen. Amen. Ooh. Thank you once again to our standing students from the Vail School and High School, and our wonderful teachers of the Alma mater. And thank you again to Board of Education for the wonderful support we enjoy for the Arts of Moffel Township.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Before Mr. Lynch leaves, I just want to, I'm sorry, I just want to say, Wizard of Oz, I'm not pro-hyperbolic when it comes to productions, but I can say that. The vocal work in that production was beyond belief. I mean, you go to most high school productions, you have a couple of kids have nice voices, a couple kind of have okay voices, and you got a couple that are kind of like, you know, nails on the blackboard, but kind of give somebody the part. And every vocalist in that group was better than the others. There wasn't one singer, one soloist, who didn't have a great voice, and even a lot of them in the ensembles, the small groups, you know, whether it's the trees or whatever, just, you know, great talent there. And I think I've ever seen a high school production whose vocal work is as good as that, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to say this. It was absolutely fantastic.
Shando. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
The Alma mater sounded graduation, and there's typically not a dry eye on the field, especially to the seniors who get very emotional, who are listening, singing. I think that was the best fifteen, twenty minutes I've spent in a board meeting in eight years. Thank you very much, Dr. Freed, Mr. Fleishman, and anyone involved in putting that together for us. It's really important for us to celebrate our students, not just for their consistent academic achievements, but for their athletic achievements. And oftentimes, what's left in the shadows are the cultural achievements. And I'm so happy that we're, we are now celebrating the cultural arts achievements of our students. We had their ceramic on display in January. Now, we have this wonderful demonstration of musicality and vocal singing. And it's really important, not just for the Board, but for the community, to see what is happening in our public schools, and what better way than to celebrate it at a public meeting? So, thank you very much, and I hope, we enjoyed it, and I hope everyone in the audience enjoyed it, and thank you all.
It's our pleasure. And keeping with the arts perspective, this is also our time to celebrate our fine arts. And if you come to the Board of Education building at 86 River Road, you will see wonderful black and white and the color of photography, as well as students in drawing and painting classes, their work displayed there. And it's also displayed in other venues around the community. I think there may be some art here as well, as well as at the public library and in other places around the community. So, please stop by our building in particular and take a look. We have quite a lot of it in our hallways. So, we continue with our next presentation, which is the HIV Report Card, HIV Harassment, Intimidation, and Voting Report Card. This is the first time that the state of New Jersey has, in fact, taken the law, the HIV law, which is around two years old, I guess, at this point in time, and has created a report card out of it. Why should I be surprised? But at any rate, they have done that, and that... But at any rate, they have done that, and back in, it may have been January, I'm not sure, maybe before that, the state gave us a self-assessment to in fact look at how we're doing with our HIV reporting, and we shared that with the community at that time, and with the Board of Education, who approved that report. But now, we actually have it in a form from the state, the Education Department, and by law, by tonight, actually, March 18th, we've had it up to almost two weeks now, it had to be displayed on our website, and each school's report card on the school's website. So, if you turn to any of our websites, you will see our HIV report card, which is very quickly, by all accounts, we did, we did very well, on all the areas, including the HIV programs, approaches, or initiatives, or training, other staff instruction and training programs, HIV personnel, HIV incident reporting procedure, investigative procedures, and so on. And from a total perspective, the district rating was a 71 out of 75. So, I don't know how we can improve too much from that, but we'll try. So, that's our HIV report card, and one of the things that we are looking at, though, in all seriousness, is that it is always so important to us to improve the culture and climate in our schools with regard to students, teachers, and all of us working together, and the kindness that we show each other, and the understanding, and the acceptance. And so, we are in fact looking to partner with United Way, who has put together a very, very comprehensive program that we hope we can use in all seven of our schools, that will in fact look to support the climate and culture in our buildings, and make our schools even greater places of acceptance and kindness for all of our students. So, that is something that we're looking at, and ultimately, if we decide to partner with United Way, we will be asking representatives to come to a Board of Education meeting and to share the program with the Board of Education before we move in that direction. So, part about the HIV report. And once again, it is online if you want to see those details. Our next presentation has to do with the PARC testing and field testing involvement that we are going to be working toward over the next several weeks. I've been talking over the last few months about the PARC testing and the field testing, but we thought it was very important for the Board of Education and community to get a more detailed explanation about what is this thing we call PARC testing, what does it look like, what do some of the questions look like? And so, I'd like to introduce Dr. Casey Shorter, our Assistant Superintendent, Andrea Salvadvi, our Assistant Superintendent Curriculum Instruction, who will be doing the presentation this evening. This is an effort that involves the two of them to a huge extent, as well as Austin Thompson, our Director of Technology, Andre Wallace, our Instructional Technology Coach, and many others around the district, who are looking to bring this forward in a way that's going to be as easy as possible to support our children and staff members. So, Casey and Andrea.
I think I get the pleasure of beginning this. So, I'm going to talk about some of the PARC testing, the idea behind why they moved to this assessment, and how it measures up instructionally. And then Casey will get into more of the nuts and bolts of the actual field testing that we'll be doing in about a week. So, these new tests in teaching schools in English Language Arts Literacy and Mathematics are a change from the NJAS and the HESPA. And what PARC has said is that they are now tests worth taking, and they are made up of text worth reading and problems worth solving. And they are full of the kinds of questions that great teachers routinely ask students. Higher order thinking skills would be involved, critical thinking skills, more problem-based types of questions is what they're talking about. And they will be closely aligned to college and career-ready standards that prepare students for success after high school. They, as I said, they measure problem-solving and critical thinking skills. The other thing that the PARC test will do that they say the NJAS and the HESPA don't is give the teacher timely feedback, as well as the students. As you know, that we wait for quite a while for these results to come back, because these are going to be computer-based for the majority of districts, and they will all be changed over once they have the technology to support it. Some districts, I guess, are a little further behind in that. It will give us feedback very quickly about where the strengths and weaknesses for our students are, and it will allow teachers to better meet their needs. It will also determine whether students are on track for college or career. There will be a writing component at every grade level, and it will allow comparisons across school districts and states. Schools, districts, and states. This is the PARC system. The areas in purple are the ones that are required, and then the ones in the nice teal color are the ones that will be optional. What we have right now, and what they have put out right now, are performance-based assessment field tests and the end-of-the-year assessment. They actually have items that match up to that right now. Speaking and listening assessment, even though they say that's required and it will be, we don't have any prototype questions, and we're not sure what that will look like right now. But as you see that, it's a non-summitive assessment, so it won't be put into the children's scores at this point anyway. The other two formative tools, the diagnostic assessment and the mid-year assessment, are not out, but when you get to Casey's part, it will show when they are supposed to be released to us. Let's just concentrate on the performance-based component and the end-of-the-year component, because that is what our students will be field testing in the next coming weeks. The performance-based component, which is PBA for short, in English Language Arts Literacy is writing essays, drawing evidence from sources, including multimedia. In the math, it will be solving multi-step problems that require reasoning and address real-world situations. The end-of-the-year component is a little bit shorter, and you're going, the children will have to demonstrate comprehension of literary and informational texts, and then in math, they'll have to demonstrate understanding of concepts, fluency, and application of knowledge. Those two scores will give them a combined total score. What I want to just show you is what these three parts actually include. Every child, when they do the problem-based, performance-based assessment, will have three areas, and these are each done on a separate day, for a total of three days. A literary analysis session, a research simulation session, and a narrative writing session. In each of these tasks, they will have to read one or more texts. For third grade, they'll probably only have to read one. By the time they get up to 11th grade, it will be multiple texts. We're talking three, four. Then they will have to answer short comprehension and vocabulary questions, and then they will have to write an essay that requires evidence from texts, and that will be multiple texts as they move up from one grade to the next. The testing time will be three days, and in grade three, it will be about less than one hour per day, and in grades four to 11. And as you can see, it's now inclusive, four to 11. English Language Arts Literacy is tested now at the English IX, English X, and English XI level, and it will be a little over one hour per day. Then, you get to the English Language Arts Literacy EOI, which will be towards the end of the school year, and it will also be given at each grade levels, grades three through 11. There will be about four to five texts that the children will have to read, but this time, it will be short-answer comprehension and vocabulary questions. So, now it's only two days of testing. Once again, it's the same amount of time at grade three, and then the same amount of time for grades four to 11. If you, you'll get, it's five days of testing just for English Language Arts Literacy. The first part will be around March, the second part will be the end of April, the beginning of May. Then they also have to do the math. The mathematics, PBA, at each grade level will include short response questions and extended response questions. And these will focus on conceptual knowledge and skills, and mathematical practices of reasoning and modeling. And the testing time is the same as the English Language Arts PBA component. They will also have an end-of-the-year, which will include short-answer questions, and that will focus on conceptual knowledge, skills, and understanding. And the testing time is two days. So, my little asterisks all lead up to that bottom section that says, for the actual PARC, students throughout the school year will participate in a total of nine testing sessions. For the field test, none of our students will be doing nine days of testing. The most we have is, some of our students are doing the English Language Arts PBA and EOI, so they would have a total of five testing days, but it would be broken up. The first part would be done, I think our elementary schools would, are doing this starting in March, March 24th, that week, and then they're not going to begin the EOI again until late May, early June. So, there is some time in between, you know, we'll work on some other things. The formative tools that they will be giving us are diagnostic assessments in grades two through eight. In reading, writing, and math, they'll be computer-based, they'll be adaptive, and they're designed to pinpoint students' strengths and weaknesses. The mid-year assessments are grades three through 11, and they are in the same subjects, ELA, literacy, and math. They will also be computer-based, but they can also be paper, and they are designed to mirror the summative assessments. These are optional for districts, and we haven't even gotten that far yet, but they are supposed to help us determine where our students' strengths and weaknesses are to help them with the assessments. But I'm comfortable and confident that our students, our teachers, do a lot of formative assessments along the way, and they know exactly where the students are as we go through the school year. And this begins Casey's part.
So, I'm just going to spend the next few minutes, four or five slides, I guess, talking a little bit about the evolution of PARC and kind of what brings us to the field tests, which are approaching quickly on March 24th. Dr. Freed mentioned before that really putting all of this together and preparing for the PARC has really been a team effort. Somebody that may not know, I'm the District Test Coordinator for All Standardized Testing, and we currently have the NJAS, and that'll be happening soon, but preparations have been ongoing for that, along with the HESPA test. And now, of course, these field tests are here from the PARC, and it really pulls in a lot of different people from the district. And this is going to be the first time that there's such a technology component associated with tests, that all these tests are going to be taken on the computer. So, Austin and his team have really gotten involved, and probably gone above and beyond, just they're working with the technology capacity to really learning a lot about the test, as well as setting up scheduling for the test, checking our infrastructure and our bandwidth, and this has been going on for over a year now. You couple that with Andrea Wallace, our Teacher Technology Coach, she's involved in teacher training, she's involved in training administrators, so she's really been pulled into the mix here. So, it's really been a team effort as this process has unfolded, and I definitely appreciate that from the District Test Coordinator position. And of course, Andrea and Dr. Freed have been here along the way. So, as you can see, this is something that's brand new. It's really a five- to six-year process in rolling this out. Back in 2010, as you can see, PARC was launched, and over the course of the subsequent four or five years, they've slowly been releasing bits and pieces about this test, and ultimately preparing us for the field test just coming up this spring. And with that information gained from that test, the actual real-life testing where it'll count is going to be next spring. Here's a brief timeline of the field tests. One of the things that the state and Pearson, the company that's sponsoring the PARC, has been really involved in, it relates to the training component. There's been regional workshops for all District Test Coordinators and Test Administrators. We actually had an onsite visit from Pearson and their people to meet with Austin and myself to go over the technology requirements a few months ago. And of course, manuals and training modules have been in line for us to access. There's a lot of information out there. The challenging part to all of this is, because it's so new, information is being released every day, and it's causing us to kind of shift on the fly, even with the test only being a couple of weeks away. But as anything that's new, there's always going to be bumps in the road for the testing company, as well as districts trying to roll this out. The purpose of the field test, I know Dr. Freed has spoken about this in prior board meetings, this is really an attempt to gather data, collect data from districts. This is really going to allow the testing company to create a more reliable, more valid test by gathering all the data and answer input that our students give, and our teachers, to hopefully have a real, live, very successful, informative test going into next spring. One good thing is, we're not alone, this isn't a New Jersey thing, that's really federal. I guess anytime there's federal dollars attached to something, it's going to expand beyond the state level. And as you can see, they tried to get a sample of general areas of the country to participate in this field test, so we're going to have over a million students, along with ours, participating in this. As you can see, 16,000 schools. And of course, all of this data is going to be collected, researched, and hopefully be formulated into a quality test that we'll be taking next year. And of course, some of the benefits that we've talked a little bit about. I guess everybody here will benefit that's involved in testing students, most importantly. They've already started getting some exposure to the PARC-like test questions and types of tests, so the teachers and students have already been engaged in that. This will give them a little bit of a flavor of what they're going to face next year. For parents also, a lot of these sites are accessible to public, so parents can go onto the PARC website and also walk through the tutorial and see, you know, what the test brings, which Andrea will share with you a little bit later. Teachers are going to have an opportunity to provide feedback to PARC about how the actual execution of the test went. You know, teachers are going to be managing this test from a digital dashboard up on their computers, so when students come into the room, they're going to have to access that dashboard on the computer and manage the test digitally while the test is going on. So, that's something that's very different than they're used to. Technology coordinators and administrators are all going to have some input and some feedback on how it went, because our goal is to have this go as smoothly as possible next year when the real test rolls out. And as Andrea had mentioned, there's going to be two windows for field testing that span just about a couple of weeks in each case, and almost a month in the end-of-the-year assessment. So, you can see March 24th, where I know most of our elementary schools are going to begin day one of that testing for the performance-based assessment. And then, of course, in May and early June, the field test for end-of-year assessment's going to take place. This all falls around our regular NJAS testing that's going to be occurring in April and May. So, you know, we have a lot going on in the next couple of months. And I think probably the greatest benefit here will be that the teachers and students are going to have some input. You know, after the students complete the field test, they're going to be presented with a digital survey from PARC and from Pearson, so they're going to answer some questions about how they found the process of answering these questions. Also, the teachers are going to have access through the computer to answer a survey on how they saw the evolution of this test, and any feedback that they would have, which hopefully would be helpful in developing the real thing next year. So, I like that part of it, that they're going to actually take some of the feedback directly from students and teachers, not just to have students respond to questions, but how they felt overall about the test. So, they're very emphasized that that's an important part of this field test. And of course, while tutorials and some sample questions have come out, which Andrea will be sharing with you in a minute, practice, full practice tests are also going to be coming this spring that are going to mirror the actual field tests for students and the public to become familiar with in preparation for the upcoming test next year. So, that was just a little bit about the evolution, a little bit about... So that was just a little bit about the evolution, a little bit about the involvement of teachers and students in the field test, and some of the things we're hoping as a district to accomplish and also to assist the testing company in developing quality tests for next year. So this time I'll, I'll turn it over to Andrea and show her walking through a few samples of what the test is gonna look like.
So here's what, here's what's next. We are in the spring of 2014, so the students will be taking the field test, and then they will be releasing practice tests as well. In the summer and fall, it will be PARK's responsibility to build the tests that we'll be using for 2015, and they will hopefully release their findings on what they've discovered and, and the research. In 2015, in the winter and spring, the mid-year assessments will be available, and then in the summer, the performance level scores will be set. And what that means is there will be five levels for the PARK. Now there is only three levels, so by that I mean there's proficient, there is partially proficient, and there is advanced proficient. With the PARK, it will have five levels, so it will go from distinguished command to no command. So it'll be a five to a one scale. They need to set where those scores will be, and then they'll need to release that before they bring it out. And then the fall, the diagnostic assessments will be available. And then in 2016, this is the last part of it, colleges and universities can use these scores to place students into credit-bearing courses. One of the big problems that states faced was that they had HESPA-like tests or some kind of state assessments, and they said, yes, our kids are good, they deserve our diploma. And then they had to take AccuPlacer tests, and they were found to be in need of remediation before they even went into regular college classes. This is supposed to take the place of that, but we will see how many colleges and universities buy into that. So that's still up in the air and a year away. These are the types of questions, and what I'm going to do is, I'm going to show you what your, the students will see. I'm gonna do grades three through five. So this is what the students will say. It says, welcome, you are about to start a test. And obviously, it won't be from grades three through five, it will be very specific, grade three, grade four, grade five. Here, they brought them all together just to give you some example of what the students will see. So the students will have to click on start, and then there are 11 questions in the E L A, these are just samples, and here it is, the start section. All right, so here's what they see. Today you will read two stories about characters who save family members. The children will have to read that. This will be their little toolbar to move forward if they wanna review, flag, and this little thing is real fun, because the children can use these, everybody will have them available. If they wanted to change their foreground, they could. If they wanted to use a magnifier, they could, and they could move it over and all of that. And if they wanna go back and you say, how are they gonna know how to do all of this? Well, the teacher will take them through a tutorial, which will actually go through all of these accessibility features that they have available to them. If they want to see the whole story, they have to scroll down, so they read the whole thing, or they can just use their little arrow keys to go down. See, now I can't do it. Hold on. And then they'll have to move up and down, and then they pick whatever it is, what is the meaning of the word master is and is used in paragraph five and six? So let's just say C, and we're moving on. If I wanna go on to the next page, I do this. The story keeps repeating because the questions over here, they still need, so they don't have to go back, they can, the story will keep repeating for them until the questions are no longer relevant, and then it'll change. So here it is, you have to drop and drag the details in the box titled setting. So I wanna use this one, so I click and drag down, and then I wanna use this one, and I wanna use this one, and then I can move forward to the next one. So I'm gonna zip through some more, because they have to do, read another story, and then they have to answer questions about that. Once again, they have to click and drag. And, okay. Here's another section that I wanted, this is their writing box. So here they would have to type in their essay, and they can... And you can go on, and they can use all these little things that they wanted cut and copy and paste, if they wanted to number, underline, all of those things that you would have if you were using Word or a Word-like application. And then we're moving on, and here's another story. And I'm trying to get to the math. Okay. So do I wanna review my answers? And I can, and if I do, it's gonna go back and it's going to tell me which ones I didn't answer, and then if I click on view, it will take me back there. Okay, I'm just gonna submit my final answers. And then it would sign, you'd have to sign back in. So if, that's pretty much what they have. The math part is similar in context, if you want me to go back through, but can you kinda get the general idea of what the students will be responsible for? Dr. Quarterley, no?
Board members don't have to take this.
No. But you can play around with it, and you can have access to it if you'd like. Does anybody have any questions about any part of this?
The text that you referred to earlier on, where you said that the children will be reading a certain number of quote-unquote texts, what does that mean?
What it means is everything is derived from some kind of literary passage, essay, memoir, nonfiction text. It could be a chapter from a book, it could be anything. There's also video embedded into this, so it could be, most of the texts are just anything that the children would need to read and comprehend, both fiction and nonfiction.
So it's not, it doesn't relate back to anything they read in class? This is, this is text that's designed by the test company?
Just, just like the NJ Ask has reading comprehension passages, and then the children have to answer questions about that, and the HESPA did the same, it's, it's the same thing. What they've done is taken another step, and now they want you to integrate these, they're all thematically based. So for example, the two that you just saw were on families, and the characters in the stories doing something to help their families. So that's the overriding theme that the children would have to answer questions about and write an essay about. At the high school level, it could be, I don't know, well, I'll use middle school, theirs is on like Amelia Earhart. So they have three different texts about Amelia Earhart, and then they have to use two out of the three to write an essay explaining and defending why they believe she was brave or not.
So the choice of literature is prescribed?
Yes. Well, no, it's not prescribed, it's just whatever they need. They don't have to read any particular books in their courses. I'm not explaining this well.
There's not, they, they don't have to read any particular books or passages in, in their classrooms to prepare for the test. The passages they see are going to be new to them, and they're going to respond to the questions that go along with them. What Andrea's pointing out is that they may actually have three, I'll call them short stories to read, all about, let's say Amelia Earhart, and the question might say, choose two of those stories that you've just read and make a comparison.
I, I thought the goal was to provide faster feedback, so I understand one of the portions where the, the child is selecting one of the multiple choice answers, but who is reading the essay answers? How are those being graded? How's their feedback being given on a third grader's essay?
It's, it's still rubric-based, so...
So the computer can read?
No, there are people who...
Human readers.
Human readers.
Oh, it's like the Barnes and...
Well, that, they have, they have human readers for the written passages for the NJ Ask and, and the other assessments as well.
There's just gonna be more of them now.
Can I ask a question? So they're gonna get feedback that's immediate?
We will, we'll walk it up to the public in a minute.
Well, we're talking like instead of waiting six months to get the results back, we might only wait three months. Well, here's, here's the thing too. They, the PBA, which is where you're going to get those extensive essays that need to be read, will be done by April. And then the ending, ending test of the year, the end of year, is done. Those are short responses, so they'll be able to grade those faster, and then they'll have all of that data much quicker, because remember, they're starting this now in March, so they're not waiting as long.
But didn't we do the Ask at that time of year as well?
Well, I'm thinking that...
Wasn't administered?
That's the promise, and I guess they have more resources and they have a lot more money to do this, so I guess that might also be a factor.
Because my recollection is sometimes we didn't get the Ask for some...
That's normal.
David and John?
Good.
Just a quick question, third graders are gonna have typing skills?
Yes, they already take keyboarding.
They take keyboarding?
Mm-hmm. And the teacher is very confident that they're a lot better than you think that they were baked in.
In the reading comprehension portion, some kids are taught to read the question first that's highlighted in texts within the, within the story. Are they gonna get keyboarding?
Yes, that's one of the accessibility features. Line reader is an accessibility feature where they can cover all the text and it just moves it down, and also highlighting will also be one.
So then, I'm sorry, the test is timed, correct?
Yes.
And what happens if the child runs into technical difficulty? Like I noticed as you moved from page to page and loading, so is that loading time? First of all, is it included in, in the time that the child has, it was accounted for? And what happens if they run into technical difficulty?
For the time, for the actual field testing, they have the regular time that they think it's going to take, then half of that. So if they think it's going to be 60 minutes, they get 60 minutes plus another 30 to account for that. And that's not accounting for anybody who gets extended time, because it's in like an I E P or they get special accommodations. As far as the technical difficulty, Casey can speak more to this, with the Proctor caching, it will not, they won't have to go back out to the web, so everything should be right there in their, on their computer, so they don't have any problems with loading or anything else. Do you wanna?
That's the part where I come in. One of the recommendations from PARK is something called Proctor caching, where basically the, all the students' tests are gonna be downloaded locally here, and then fed to our servers. So if the internet goes down during testing or something like that, that's okay, because the test is gonna be located locally here in a secure way, so it'll be fed to each one of the kids' computers. So if they have technical glitch on their computer, they can stop the test, and the teacher will be in, in charge of that, working from their dashboard, and that child can either get another computer or move to a different computer, sign in, and then continue taking the test on another computer.
So the teachers are gonna be able to monitor all of this?
It's the plan.
Now, just to clarify what Andrea talked about with the 60 minutes and then plus the other 30, that's on the field test. And this is so that the testing company can get an idea of what does it, how long does it take, the quote average child, I would guess, to complete the test. So if they really underestimate it, and every child in the room needs, instead of 60 minutes, 80 minutes, they'll know that because the child can continue beyond the 60-minute mark. Now eventually, their goal, I guess, would be to design the real test to last about 60 minutes.
And Karen, to speak to your point also, I know for at least the field test, I'm sure this will continue into regular testing, we're gonna have one of our technical, you know, one of Austin's guys, technical assistants there, each one of the building, in case something like that happens, be there to assist just in case.
I'm stressed out.
Well, you know, I, I did wanna ask two, and I hope for quick questions, but I first wanted to say that I remember, Dr. Freed, when you came to us, that you had been contacted by someone in, in this organization or state-like or, or federal level about us as a district taking these field tests. And once again, I think your judgment and vision for our district is, is as precise as could possibly be positive for the district. I would not wanna be a school district going into this next year without having a better set of field tests, so thank you very much.
Not to burst your bubble, Matt, but about more than 80% of the school districts in New Jersey...
That's okay, that's okay. It's good that we're doing it, because this is a have-to-be eventually federally, so our students, our teachers, our administrators, our technology people, everybody's gonna run in front, so thanks. It's obviously a massive undertaking, and, you know, we, we get what you're having to do. We've talked previously about the unfunded mandate aspect of this. I, I did wanna just, just go to two quick points. You're, you're saying that it is gonna allow for comparisons across schools, districts, and states. Is, are they gonna go to that peer group scenario that we've seen with the other testing?
This is supposed to just roll right in, so take out the Ask, take out the HESPA, put in the PARK, and nothing else changes. That's what the state has claimed, and Dr. Freed and I have been there. There's some skepticism with that, I don't know, I think it's a very different test than the children are used to, and I think it, but they seem to say that it can be done. So we will see. But yes, that school performance report is not going to change, because we're changing over to the PARK.
It's not, that's what we're being told right now.
That's what we're being told right now.
Very well. And, and the other question, I just wanted to clarify, there, there are certain classes and tests that help colleges to assess the levels where students are going into college. Your comment, I just wanted to clarify, is stating that they're expecting PARK is going to do that as well theoretically?
Theoretically, the, the PARK consortia's goal, one of their goals, was to have colleges and universities be able to use this to, based on the cutoff and what scores the children get, be able to place them and determine whether they would need remediation or not, like the AccuPlacer tests do now that a lot of colleges use. I don't, but that's what PARK is saying that they hope it to be. We don't know, and we haven't heard any buy-in from colleges and universities at this point, but that's their claim to us.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah. As soon as the fourth grader next year, when the whole thing gets running, and you'll get the scores back hopefully in the summer, between the regular year and the end of the year, then let's suppose this fourth grader is doing terrible. What do you do then? What do you do then?
A lot of what we already do. We would assess that student. We would probably have that student in some kind of remediation or basic skills program.
So in other words, you're using this to identify each individual student's needs. And then you would make sure that student gets help in some way, shape, or form.
Absolutely.
Then done at the school level, the school principals, then have the results of Johnny Jones. And if we find a whole cabinet of kids that can't multiply in third grade, then I guess we have a problem with the curriculum, one would think. And that's how you're gonna use this to improve the curriculum also and to help the individual kids, right?
Yeah. We, we, we already try to target our resources toward our children who are having difficulties. So for example, we may not have the same amount of basic skill instruction in every one of our five elementary schools. Because if we have one school where more children have needs, that's where we put more of the resources.
Yeah, the point I was trying to make, we just don't take these tests and let them sit in a drawer somewhere. We actively use them. I think that's important. We use them. Everyone says we have so damn many test samples. But we use the results from the test as an instructional tool to help improve instruction. And that's the point I was trying to make with two questions.
Right. And, and the, the other thing, again, you know, I, I always try to be very hopeful and optimistic about, about changes and about new innovations. And we are hoping in fact that the assessments, that these new test questions are in fact, as they're saying, that they're worthwhile. It's a test worth taking. Because in fact, it's starting to assess our children on, on the kinds of skills that we think are important, such as analyzing, comparing. And it's not in fact just about facts and, and so on. More about learning concepts and applying them.
Thank you.
I have one more question. I'm sorry. It, it says in one of the slides that throughout the school year, the students will participate in a total of nine testing sessions. So that's like thirty minutes. On some limits, it's at less than an hour. Some said maybe up to an hour or a little more. So are the students every, for, for nine, for nine days, they have to, they'll, they'll walk into school knowing that in some portion of the day they're going to be tested?
Yes, for the actual 2015 testing, when it goes live and it's the real thing. The first, the PBA will be three days of English Language Arts Literacy and two days of mathematics for a total of five days. Then towards the end of the year, the end of the year assessments are two days of English Language Arts Literacy and two days of mathematics for a total of nine days, a little over nine hours. Versus now how we do it, it's a little over, it's like six and a half hours. But it's one shot. It's, you know, over three, four days.
At, as an educator, do you think that that's a benefit?
I think if the assessments are worthwhile and they're very much aligned to the standards and the curriculum that we're teaching, it gives us much more data to pinpoint those weaknesses that we might have in our curriculum or for our struggling students. So where the NJASK and the HESPA didn't give us enough targeted information, the hope is that this will. And instead of saying, okay, you need to repeat this whole chapter, now we just say, you just need to repeat this section because this is where you had your weakness, not the whole thing. So it's much more accurate to pinpoint where students are excelling as well, not where challenges are. That's the hope. So if that's the case, then I'm okay with it.
What's your opinion?
Right. And PARK is designed around the common core?
Around the common core and around college and career readiness.
Okay, I have a few questions. What would you anticipate at the high school level, the testing schedule would be? You know, you're gonna do like, pull it on one period for nine days in a row or what?
No, at the high school level, there are going to be six classes that need to be tested. English nine, ten, eleven, and Algebra one, Geometry, and Algebra two. So the thought is very similar to what they do now. If the seniors probably would come in late, they would have a delayed opening. And for those five days, everybody else in the building, because they probably would have to, be taking some kind of assessment. If they weren't taking an assessment, they probably wouldn't be in the building. And then that would kind of be the case. And our hope is that we would always do this in the morning and not do any kind of sessions in the afternoon. But if they only take over, a little over an hour, so you'd say total two hours just for setup, getting everybody together, packing everything up afterwards, it would be the first two hours of the morning. And then they would have to modify the schedule to fit in everything in the afternoon.
So you'd anticipate we'd be losing probably five mornings for testing?
Oh, yeah. You're gonna lose, yes. Nine days are going to be interrupted for every time.
But if you interrupt, they mean an entire morning?
At least two periods of that morning.
Part of it. I wanna, you know, probably comment, compliment Austin Thompson on his work in this area. It's been just phenomenal. Even now, with only like a week to go before the test, stay dead, parks, and new changes that I then send out to Andrea, Casey, and Austin. And he's on top of this immediately. Today, he was actually running the demonstration of this to make sure that everything's in place and finding the glitches and fixing the glitches. And so, and one of the things that we asked Austin to do was to work with our buildings and to develop several different possible schedules with our principals, where we could do this most efficiently and effectively with as little instructional downtime as possible. And ultimately, through his planning and arguing it over, we picked a model that we again think is the best model for us. And as Andrea is describing, it in fact takes the high school all at once and, and tests. Because you can have a child in Geometry who might be in ninth grade or might be in tenth grade. So we can't say we're gonna just test the ninth graders now because we may have kids in tenth grade in that course. So it's different than the elementary school where everyone in the third grade is in third grade. So we found that being elementary-specific, middle-school-specific, and high-school-specific was the best way to, to in fact schedule with the least downtime possible.
It just seems like even with the least amount of downtime possible, we're still looking at probably nine and a half days a year, correct?
We're looking at the two-hour disruption, so to speak, in terms of testing time, yes, at the high school level and that, yeah.
He said that now, these days, they have PARK proficient, proficient, advanced proficient. He said they're placed with a one to five scale. What exactly are the five categories? And what do you have to get to be proficient? A two, a three, what? Or get to pass the test, I should say.
They have, level five is distinguished command, level four, strong command, level three, moderate command, level two, partial command, and level one, minimal command. We don't know what those scores are set to right now. This is part of the field test. Once they get all that data, then in the summer, I think at late summer is when we will get, what those cutoffs will be to be at each one of those levels. But right now, we have no data on that. All we know is that there will be five levels.
Now, in evaluating the mathematics, let's say for example, a student does really well on the PBA and not so well on the EOI. He's above where he needs to be passing for the PBA, but below for the EOI. Do you, what do you do? Do you average the two scores? Do you say he's proficient in PBA but not in EOI? I know he's in the word proficient, but what are, is it proficient passing? How do I, how do I put it?
We, we don't know at this point if it's...
Yeah, those two are, those two are combined to be a total score.
I don't know if they're equally combined or not. But it does say that you need to, the college and career readiness determinations say that you need to have a performance level descriptor of four, which is strong command, as a threshold score for earning college and career readiness. Now, that makes sense at the eleven, you know, at the high school level. I don't know what it does to, for a third grader.
So you're saying, as far as you know, you're gonna need at least a four to graduate from high school?
It doesn't say that. It just says that that's the threshold for earning the determination of college and career readiness.
I, I think we know at the beginning of this process that these scores at the high school level are not going to be used as determination for high school eligibility to graduate, am I correct? We don't know eventually if they'll start to use those as some sort of landmarks, kind of like HESPA. But right now, it does not, they don't have any indicators about either the English tests or the tests in the three areas of math, Algebra, Geometry, Algebra two, which determine by high school. So right now, we don't have, they're saying that those scores do not determine that right now.
And finally, and I think it's what you said right now, but science, has that changed? Biology, is that part of it?
No, science will still be given at fourth grade and eighth grade. And biology will still be done, but it will be done separate and it will still be owned and written and done by the state of New Jersey, not PARK.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment or have questions about this particular presentation on PARK?
Actually, I, I would like to know a question.
You just, you just need to state your name and address.
Sandra President-Bellman. I, I am a mother of a third grader, a first grader, and a preschooler. And I would just like to know what, what you're planning as a school board or board of education here to assist my children as they're entering third grade. And like you said, Dr. Kane, how they're gonna be expected to be able to type? I'm sorry, Dr. Madrak, you had said that. How is my third grader going to be educated on keyboarding? So that they can actually be able to type quickly and efficiently?
Andrea, can I say something?
Currently, we have keyboarding for third graders. And they meet with their keyboarding teacher once a week. And then fourth grade and fifth grade rotate in, and that will remain the same. So the Board of Education last year was foresighted enough to realize that, that there was a need and put that into the budget for us to have our keyboarding teacher, Nicole Portnoy. And she travels to each one of our five elementary schools. And she, she is very proud. And if you talk to her, very hopeful that the students are doing much better than we, the adults, think that they're capable of doing. She said they're very intuitive and they have grown up with this technology. So it's very easy for them to manipulate. And they can type well enough to answer the questions that they need to answer for their level.
The, the other thing besides having the actual class, the keyboarding class that the students will have as they enter third grade, is that because of our need to spend four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars on the Chromebooks to in fact be able to bring the testing, move the testing forward in our schools, while we don't have those Chromebooks involved in the testing, which again is March and, and May or June, those Chromebooks will be in our schools. So it is our expectation. And Andrea Wallace, our, our technology, our coach, will be providing workshops for teachers, working in teachers' classrooms with them. And these Chromebooks will be in our elementary schools. So our third graders will in fact have access to those Chromebooks on a pretty routine basis. And so when a teacher in the classroom is giving them, let's say, a writing assignment, sometimes it will be on a piece of paper as they're used to. But other times, they'll be composing on the, on the Chromebook. So they'll have lots of opportunities for what we'll call practice. So because it's certainly a little different to write a story on a piece of paper. You know, they're used to writing maybe a, a first, a first copy and copying it over into a final copy. Now, of course, they'll be composing on the keyboard, making their edits on the keyboard. So they'll have practice in their actual classrooms that have to do that as well. So between the keyboarding instruction and the practice in their classrooms, we'll have them as ready as possible, of course, for the assessments. Part of the, part of the movement from the PARK to this computer-based or technology-based testing is to move our students into this world of technology. That's part of their goal, is to help our children be technology literate. So that's the move toward this.
Is there anyone else?
I've got a question.
Have we done any kind of an objective evaluation in the district to determine whether or not our students are at the level where they need to be as far as keyboarding? And I know you're saying subjectively, they're doing better than we anticipate, but I just wanna make sure we know for a fact that they're where they need to be. Because I hate to see anybody tank on the tests, not because they don't know English, but just because they can't type.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have any, you know, specific data about that. And of course, we're talking about next year's, this year's second graders will be next year's third graders. So, so we don't. But, but again, as Andrea is saying, we are gonna provide the instruction. We're going to have the actual devices in our schools. Our teachers will have training on how to in fact work with our students in that way. And we hope to move our children, you know, forward in this area.
Right now, keep wanting to start with third grade?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, Randy Jones, twenty-four. My question based on what Sandra said and what you're talking about. Is it possible to start the keyboarding in kindergarten and through kindergarten first and second to get them prepared so that when they're in third grade, they're not just getting it for the first time? I understand the kids use a lot of electronics now. I have a third grader. He's home, he's typing, it takes him, he's doing lots of it. It takes him a long time. But to be in the classroom with the stress of a test and have to type everything out, I think to get them prepared for this over the years, they should, you need to come at an earlier grade. About that, I just agree.
Thank you.
What about students whose primary language is not English? Or other students who need assistance? What kind of combinations are we gonna have for that?
There's a lot. And our special services department has been on, working with the state, going on webinars and workshops. So they do have, there's accommodations for our ESL students. There's accommodations for our students with disabilities. So they have above and beyond what is accessible to every children. So they've really taken that into, into account. And there's actually more combinations available, once everything is up and running, than there are for the students currently with the ASK.
Hi, Ms.
Hi. Yeah, I'm a teacher at the high school. I'm glad, just calmly, you asked a question with the science because that was one of my concerns. But I also am concerned because New Jersey originally was gonna HESPA sort of everything. You know, we were gonna get to science and social studies and all the rest of it too. So we're getting rid of HESPA for all the language arts and math stuff. Are we still gonna end up HESPA-ing everything else and being tested like fifteen hours a year or whatever? I'm curious whether we throw in all the rest of that, or do we know at all at this point? Are we gonna keep HESPA in the science and keep just doing that separately? Or is that gonna end up as part of this? It's like, you know, I've been in this district now and teaching for a long time. It's like test, every like five years, we get a new batch of things. So I'm getting, I'm glad, please don't. I don't know that you can answer any of this, but you understand about, I'm worried about her.
We are too. And we can only give you the information that we get. And as far as we know, that New Jersey is not getting rid of biology and/or science at fourth and eighth grade. They haven't said anything beyond that.
Because they're gonna test for chemistry and physics, and that's social studies and everything else too, so. I don't, this is not an actual question, I'm sorry, just bringing, bringing this.
No, thank you for your insight. Any more board questions? Any more questions on the public? Thank you.
Thanks, Casey and Andrea. Okay, we have one more presentation. This is our budget, uh, presentation. This is the preliminary budget adoption. Uh, we've given, uh, three, uh, presentations prior, one's about budget development. The last two were about preliminary budget. And so Jim Tevis, our business administrator, myself, will go through this presentation. Oh, there it is magically on the screen. So much of what you're about to see, if you've been here for the, uh, other presentations about preliminary, uh, budget, have not changed. So I will go through some of the items, um, quickly. This is our mission statement. I'm not going to read aloud. And, uh, these are our, um, our student learning goals, um, for this present year, thirteen fourteen. Um, and as we go toward the end of the year, I'll be reporting to the Board of Education and community on where we are with our goals. Um, and, uh, I did that a couple of months ago, as we did, uh, the first couple of months of the school year. And, uh, our vision for the future, I'll just touch upon a couple of things here. Teacher effectiveness and student engagement, the incentive for more work. Passionate learners, inclusive and collaborative settings, and maintaining excellence, and becoming a district of distinction. Our academic proposals. We maintain programs, uh, and have new initiatives at our great various, uh, schools and grade levels. We maintain our class size, teaming, um, and we do have new, uh, initiatives in, again, various areas. And this is our elementary proposals, um, and I will pause here to, um, to, uh, make a couple of comments. The first item on here is the reduction to two elementary teachers. Um, and this was based on staffing. Every year in our schools, um, our enrollment can fluctuate. We may have two sections of a particular grade, uh, let's say, grade three. The following year, uh, those two sections may become two sections of grade four. And in that present grade four, there may be three sections. So we might in fact decline by a section, uh, for that year. I have listed here, uh, a reduction of teachers in two particular schools, uh, Woodmont and Cedar Hill. I have been, um, giving a great deal of thought to, um, one of these reductions, and that's at Woodmont, over the last, um, couple of weeks. Um, we have seen, um, a couple of factors emerge, um, that I wanted to share with the Board of Education tonight, which causes me to, uh, potentially look at a different recommendation. Um, we have received our school performance reports, um, and we have seen, um, an indication at Woodmont School, um, that the achievement, uh, that we've noticed isn't as high as we would like it to be. Uh, we also have, through that report, seen the, um, statistics that put our schools in different peer groups. Um, and there are two factors at Woodmont that stand out. One is that compared to our other elementary schools, a greater percentage of students on free and reduced lunch. And, um, a significant, um, greater percentage of our students who are limited in English proficiency. Those factors stand out in a very significant way, which I think puts Woodmont, um, in a particular situation that requires more support at times. Um, the other factor is that the enrollment in grades two to three at Woodmont, um, has increased in the last two weeks. So that has brought us closer to the class size limit, if you will. So it would be based on, um, um, my looking at those factors, and again, looking at board policy, um, it would be my recommendation that, uh, we do not in fact reduce Woodmont School by a teacher, but in fact leave that teacher, uh, in the budget. Um, I don't know if the board wants to comment now or later about that.
Sorry.
I'll just continue. So continuing, as I mentioned before, we'll have Chromebooks and carts, uh, in every elementary school. Air conditioning in our elementary schools that will help us as we extend our year further into June. Two additional hours per day for lunch and recess aids at Woolly Mason in Hilldale. Summer kindergarten screening, summer support for schools. Lazar Middle School, uh, guidance counselors, uh, to meet some summer needs. So additional day for each of our four guidance counselors there, and one day for each school nurse at Lazar. And in the summer, and providing twenty thousand dollars to support the new lessons. Um, again, Chromebooks and carts to support instruction in the humanities department, as well as throughout the school. We're adding additional bus and services to Lazar as necessary to make sure that our buses are running on time. And two additional school clubs, set in a newspaper. At the high school, uh, additional student assistance counselor. Of course, the emotional and social well-being of our students is of great importance to us. Two additional science teachers to support, uh, bringing biology to grade nine and offering both biology and earth science in ninth grade. And also expanding the science research program now into the senior year. And an additional world language program, as we have more children, uh, enrolling in those courses. We have some new course offerings, tomorrow's teachers and an AP computer science class. Expansion of the research-based humanities program, uh, which I think, uh, we've been very excited about this year, its first year. And then the continuation of science research now into its third year next year, so that we'll have sophomores, juniors, and seniors. We just had the, um, I'll call it the recruiting fair for the science research program, uh, about a week and a half ago or so, maybe a week ago. On Monday night, and we had a very nice turnout, um, of interested students. Also at the high school, four additional school clubs, the UK Straight Alliance Literary Magazine, History Club, and Mandarin Honor Society. A stipend position for the auditorium manager, um, and four melophones for the marching band. Here is special services, a teacher at the high school, appoint six teacher for Wilson Reading at Lazar. Our occupational therapists, increasing the two occupational therapists from a point eight position, that's four days a week, to a full-time position. They already receive benefits, uh, and secretary at Lazar increasing from ten months to twelve months. And the other new thing on this slide is the IEP Direct, um, um, software. Right now, we use something called TyNet. Uh, IEP Direct is a more, I'll call it advanced system, which ties in very nicely with our, um, our present student database. Uh, also, um, it ties in very nicely to the writing of IEPs. Um, it will help us create our state reports with more accuracy. And, um, it's a system I think that will benefit our, our students, parents, and teachers well. Under technology proposals, we're looking for an additional technician to support teachers', uh, students, and in particular with all of the testing that we're now doing, the technology, this is important. Interactive response system, which is a pilot program in Hilldale School, see how that system works. Chromebooks and carts, the details listed later on. Under athletic proposals, a golf assistant coach. Uh, so if the boys and girls teams have to play separately, we have two adults with them. An assistant, uh, coach for winter track, an assistant coach for spring track, and replacement golf cart. And professional development, training in these areas, include school improvement panels, our school, uh, improvement teams in each building. Science research, training, AP course training, and others. We do have some district curriculum to continue to write, so it's a limited amount of money in the budget for summer curriculum development work. And now we have our capital and maintenance proposals.
Thank you, Dr. Freed. Okay, any, uh, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget, we have a number of, uh, maintenance and repair, uh, items included in the budget. What we do is try to do something, uh, to meet the needs of every school in the district, well, seven of them. Uh, at each of the schools, you're going to see some, uh, some maintenance items such as, uh, replacing playground mulch and replacing, uh, painting of halls and installation of blinds, uh, that have been damaged over the years. We have that initiative in a number of the schools. Uh, one thing I always like to point out at the beginning of these presentations is, uh, we are going to post this presentation, like we do every single one, to our website. We post it, uh, usually by the end of tomorrow, we should have it up there. Uh, especially as we get into just a couple of the last slides that are a little on the detail side when it comes to the numbers. It's a little difficult to, to sometimes just sit here and try to read it on the outline in front of you, or even on the screen. Uh, but I do urge you to go to the website, and blow it up if you wish, and feel free to contact me directly with any financial, officially financial kind of questions. Take a phone call, emails, and I've done that a number of occasions, and I'm happy to do that. So again, going through the list, you know, I'm not going to read you verbatim, but like I mentioned, a number of, uh, uh, maintenance items that we are doing. Initiatives, a few of schools such as tower replacements, for example. Moving carpets in a number of classrooms, this has been an ongoing initiative. This is now the third year, I believe, and we're continuing initiative moving forward. We move on to the middle school. We have one, uh, initiative that scans out the issue in terms of, uh, upgrading all the clocks in the classrooms and the building at large. So that's been, uh, something that's been on the radar for some time, and, uh, you know, we've, we've included that for, uh, to take care of that in particular year. At the high school, we have a number of, uh, larger type of initiatives. Uh, we're actually in the middle right now, as, uh, Dr. Freed reported earlier in the meeting, uh, meeting regards to an initiative to, uh, improve all the athletic playing field at the high school. And that's in relation to moving the, uh, athletic, uh, field back to Lazar Middle School because of the power lines that are going to be coming online soon. Um, we'll be looking at, and when we do the fields, we'll be looking at, uh, replacing the sprinkler system. Um, we're looking to do, uh, install a drop ceiling in the newly renovated, uh, boys and girls locker rooms at the high school. Uh, a large project that we have slated for the fourteen fifteen, which is included in this budget, is upgrading the, uh, auditorium sound and lighting systems. And it's going to be theatrical following. So, uh, we're looking to do that. Uh, we're doing phase two of a, a door replacement project. We did, uh, phase one this past summer. This will be the second phase. First phase was kind of more locks. Uh, this phase is going to be more door oriented. Um, and, uh, two other, uh, larger projects that are going to be included in this budget are, uh, looking at putting in a lift in the, uh, high school auditorium, a handicapped ADA lift for, uh, easier access. Uh, and looking to do, uh, an ADA compliant section on the bleachers, the outside bleachers at the football field. District-wide, we're looking to do phase two of the, uh, the, the permanently, now the elementary, uh, school's air conditioning project. Uh, we had, uh, addressed, uh, some, some air conditioning in, uh, really five of the, uh, five of the elementary schools and the middle school. It's past summer. It's actually still ongoing as we speak, finishing it up, doing the electrical, doing testing with those units now. Um, we have a, uh, initiative in this budget to do some more concrete and, uh, curb repair work. And just some basic maintenance items that you'll see on an annual basis in most of our budgets. This is kind of nice, this is really now the second budget that I've been able to, uh, in Montpel, that I've been able to say that it's not just a maintenance budget. My first three years in the district were, you know, especially two thousand ten, for example, were pretty rough. And, you know, we, we saw a lot of stuff coming out of the budget, as opposed to finally being in a position where Dr. Freed's been able to, uh, present and propose a number of new initiatives. Uh, and just, uh, and this is a big one, uh, and, you know, I'll just turn it back over to Dr. Freed just for a moment to, uh, to address the technology aspect.
So, uh, I alluded to this, uh, in, in various parts of the, of the evening, of course, and the, the large item on here, the Chromebooks for PAR testing, eight hundred forty, uh, Chromebooks. And of course, carts that go with them, the carts are a place to store them and to, um, uh, and to charge them. Uh, then additional hundred twenty Chromebooks for the humanities research program that we're expanding at the high school, and the carts to go with those. We're also, um, looking to bring in some tablets, uh, for that program too, and some furniture. Students work collaboratively in that, in that course and program, and, uh, having different seating, uh, is, um, a plus for them. And the humanities department at Lazar, uh, bringing in, um, Chromebooks there as well. And then I alluded to the fact that we would be taking those eight hundred forty, uh, when they would not be used for testing, we would divide them up around the district. And so what you see there for the elementary schools, the minimum of ninety per school. Uh, if not ninety, above the eight hundred forty, that's the ninety within the eight hundred forty. Uh, so those would go to the elementary schools, the middle school, and the high school when they weren't being used for testing. Uh, we had to up, uh, upgrade the internet bandwidth, both the service and the hardware, wireless network, and rewire it. Uh, Woodmont School, which is part of our multi-year plan to rewire all of our schools for technology.
Um, this will be the second year now that we're addressing security initiatives in, within our, actually, within our proposed budgets. Um, we'd had an ad hoc, uh, safety and security committee that the board had appointed, uh, about a year and a half ago. Uh, we just recently, their last organization meeting back in January, the board made that a permanent standing committee. That's chaired by, uh, John Marrow. Matter of fact, I believe we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon to, to review some of the safety and security initiatives that are included in the thirteen fourteen budget. So we're including those initiatives moving forward to fourteen fifteen. At the media center, for the, specifically for the, for the high school, um, we started an initiative last year. Last year at the, at the high school, uh, to move six hundred thousand dollars from our capital reserve account and set it aside specifically for this purpose, for improving, uh, not only the high school media center, but taking a look at our media centers district-wide. Uh, the high school's actually the first one we're going to be addressing. We've already, uh, sent that an RFP for design professionals, uh, we've received those. Our next step is, uh, Dr. Freed, uh, be setting up a meeting with the, uh, the committee at the high school to take a look and, uh, start reviewing, uh, for the design professional itself. Uh, this year, fourteen fifteen, we're, uh, included in the initiative to move another four hundred thousand dollars to reserve for this purpose, giving us a million dollars more for improvement of the district-wide media centers. This brings us basically to the, uh, summation of the budget, if you will. This is the, uh, I'll just take a, just a few moments to review the financial highlights. Uh, at the last board meeting, the board had discussed, uh, moving the local tax levy increase, uh, up a little bit from one point seven five percent up to two percent, uh, which we did. However, you know, what I'll point out, and that's on the next slide, is, uh, the board actually, uh, could, uh, implement a number of waivers if they wish that are, um, and it's expulsion. One of the biggest things, first was bank cap. In other words, it wouldn't allow the board to go above the two percent, uh, local tax levy increase cap. However, this board is, is very fiscally responsible, and they have been, uh, since I've been here, certainly, I think, way before my tenure. Um, and they're very cognizant of the fact that, yeah, you can go above that local tax levy, uh, cap, but then what happens is, you, you have to pay for it. And the budget in large part, in, in Montpel at least, is funded by local tax levies. It's, you know, we do get some state aid, some federal grants, the lion's share is coming from the, from the taxpayer directly. So if the increase, you, any, anytime you go up, you increase that local tax levy, it's going to really have a tax impact. So by keeping it at that two percent, we're, uh, being very fiscally responsible. Uh, that being said, the percentage, the expense budget itself, bottom line, is less than a one percent increase in the actual general fund oper- 1% increase in the actual general fund operating expenses, 28%. As Dr. Freed and I, just, you know, taking a few minutes, there are a number of new educational facility initiatives. And what it represents is an actual tax rate decrease of 1.75%. That means it's roughly a $140 increase per year for the average home. The average home right now is assessed at about $528,000. Shared services, I always just like to highlight some of the shared services that we do in the Montville Township, and, you know, we're constantly looking to expand upon that. The board very collaborative with the township, for example. I missed a number of our other items. I believe we have another meeting scheduled in about another month, Dr. Freed, with township and the township committee and some board members. State aid, I reported at the last few meetings that we did get an increase in state aid. Received roughly additional $80,000. And the board, what we did with that was we took that and we utilized it against fund balance. Instead of adding to the budget, adding expenditures to the budget, we reduced our reliance on fund balance to, you know, on the revenue side of the budget. This is that slide I was referring to, that you might be best taking a look at our website when we do post it. That way you could blow it up and, you know, send actually direct questions right to me and you wouldn't have to get driven. So I'll just take a quick minute, and I just want to point out a couple of highlights, that 2% cap there I was referring to. If you look at the far right-hand column down towards the middle, that green number in bold, the 2%, that is the statutory cap, if you will, on how much a board, local board can increase the local tax levy. There are exceptions to that, however. One of those exceptions referred to is bank cap. So in theory, if the board really wanted to, they could increase this, this budget by another, you know, $1.7 million above that local tax levy. Of course, you'd have to pay for it, so that means, you know, taxes would go up, so that's something that we're cognizant of. That being said, at the very bottom on the right-hand side, you see that $140 that I referred to. That's the average home assessed, like I said, at about $528,000 in Montville.
What was the average home assessed at?
$528,000 this year. Five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five, two, eight. And that's, like I said, that 140 is on the average home, not on the 100,000, so that's about it. That being said, that's pretty much the highlights. Like I said, it's a multi-year comparison. And again, I do urge you, seriously, I've taken that every year. I usually take a few either phone calls or emails from community members, and we're going to have to do that. And future budget discussions at this point, I don't see a real need at April 8th. You know, we're really looking at the public hearing of the budget, hopefully by April 29th. I'll actually, after tonight's meeting, there's a resolution on there adopting a preliminary budget. I then submit the package to the Department of Education for review, and ultimately approval by the executive county superintendent of schools. And then it comes to the Board of Education on April 29th for a final public hearing and final adoption of the budget. And the budget could actually be changed right up to the date of the public hearing itself. And our presentation, Dr. Freed.
Sure, so now I will turn it over to the board for questions or comments.
I just wanted to make a comment about, Dr. Freed, the things you said about the Woodmont teacher, and I think it was clearly the right decision, and I do appreciate, I just, I'll share a story. Rosemary Sullivan was a nurse at Woodmont for a zillion years, loved. And the day came when it was time for her to retire. And nurses, Carol Capitelli came to take over, and Rosemary was younger, the ropes. And this is where we keep the gloss Band-Aids, this is where we keep syringes, whatever, this medical supply. And over here is where we keep the Halloween costumes. And Carol says, why would you keep Halloween costumes in the nurse's office? And the response was, well, because here, every year, we always have a number of kids whose parents can't afford to have Halloween costumes, so we always want to make sure they have one. And it's one of the things that goes on at Woodmont. It's a sort of warm school, and I have absolutely no doubt being a Woodmont parent, that kids get just as good an education as Woodmont, as they do anywhere else. It's just that sometimes it takes more resources because there are issues there that don't exist in all those schools. There are, like I said, people who have come from, you know, families that don't have the means that they have in some other places, families that speak limited English, and a lot of children live in the apartments, which doesn't make them lesser students, but what it does is create a lot of mobility, where there's a lot of in and out, in and out. And when my daughter started kindergarten, and I did a school study, there are, I think, 66 kids in her class, 44 were from the houses, 22 were from the apartments. By the time she graduated, 36 of the 44 in the homes were still there, 19 of the 22 in the apartments are gone. So it just, just goes to indicate that there are, you know, things that you can't treat every school the same. It's our goal to have every school the same. And I quote Dr. Freed for that. And for that reason, I wholly heartedly support his decision to leave the teacher at Woodmont. Because, believe me, by next September, that 45 could very easily be about 51.
I agree with Mike. Is there consensus on the board? I'll just do a straw poll on whether or not.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, we had consensus, and Dr. Freed gave us the rationale he gave the public. We're deciding not to, at this point, eliminate the teacher, and we'll be putting a budget at the next meeting.
Yeah, for the sake of the public, since we have board consensus, the resolution, as it reads tonight, doesn't include the teacher, but when we adopt the budget on April 29th, it will. Those adjustments will be made, and the budget will include the teacher that was reduced.
Yeah, the resolution that I actually will present at April 29th, the final adoption will include the original teacher. I'll maybe just, so the people know it's me.
Any other question on the board? I'll put it up to the public for any comments on the budget. Okay.
Just a few air minutes in a while.
But you're not going to yell at us, right?
Margaret Gorski, Boise Parkway Drive, Heimbra. Thank you. Dr. Freed, you stole all my thunder. You must have read my notes. You have, I've written down here. So thank you for that. And thank you for all your support in keeping Woodmont. It is a, we are a unique environment, we believe, and historically it's been proven, so I've been up here many times speaking about that. And on all the situations, Cedar Hills, and what grade levels affected, and how close the numbers are as well. Well, my other point that I was going to come up was going to be that five-letter word, PARCC, park. You know, it's not a good time, I think, to be playing the numbers game if the numbers are so close, because there's so much at a third grade level or any level, you know, to be able to implement all this stuff, to teach these children, to make sure that they're at a level that they need to be if the class sizes are larger, just because you're short in number or two. So again, I don't know what the situation is in Cedar Hills as well, but I know in Woodmont, where, like, we were that close. And as a parent, I don't have someone who's going to be going into that grade next year, but I have one currently in third grade. And yes, she gets keyboarding once a week. And yes, I've seen her type, but I've seen her take, you know, 20 minutes to type her 20 spelling words. And, you know, she does it, but that's just 20 spelling words, and she's copying all the piece of paper. So to bring a third-grade student up to speed from a typing perspective for park once a week is, is going to be challenging. So to, you know, a lot of that's going to fall on the teachers, and if you have less teachers because the class sizes are larger, then that's also going to be a challenge as well. But if the teacher's able to help assist those students, then they'll be better prepared for these testing that we have. Also, just because it's been bothering me since I first saw the agenda a couple of years, a couple of weeks ago, and it's just one of those, I need to know things because I think about it, and I don't know why I think about it, but I just want to know. I'm curious to know why playground mulch is an initiative for the schools. My understanding was that there was a legal requirement in the code or whatever it was that there has to be a certain amount of playground mulch on the playground to be compliant for safety regulations. And I know that hasn't been done this year, and it used to be done in the past, and I don't know if it was done in previous years, but I thought that was something that we had to do, that, again, legally we think that had to do, and maybe I'm incorrect in how legal or required it might be. But to see it as an initiative, does that mean it's just going to happen this year and it's not going to happen again? Is it, is this an ongoing thing that's going to be brought back into the district again? Because I know it used to be, every summer, they'd come in and they'd lay the new mulch down for all the playgrounds, and it hasn't happened. And I questioned it with our principal, and who's home to question it, and now I see it as an initiative. So I'm just curious to know what it's an initiative versus a requirement.
So sure, I can respond to that. Every year at President's Council, parents ask me about playground mulch. And my assumption is that either new mulch is put down if it's necessary, or the existing mulch is raked and fluffed up, so to speak, so that provides the safe amount of cushioning that our students need underneath the equipment. And I'm confident in Steve Taft, our facilities director, that he's on top of that. Reason I put it on the new initiatives is because I wanted our parents to know that I haven't thought about it, and I want our school district, Steve Taft and others, to know that I haven't forgotten about it. So I put it there because it's something that will do. Not for any other reason. We expect to do it every year in terms of making sure our playgrounds are safe, whether it's new mulch or we have enough mulch already there that when we, you know, re-groom it, it's what we need it to be.
Question.
Question case. If there's no else for the public on the budget, and I'll close public participation. And for the budget, and one more to our committee, the business ministry.
No report to see.
Any committee reports? By Nancy Sullivan.
Yeah, the committee met in February. Most of the items were either on the earlier meeting we had in March or tonight. Have report that the high school in Hilldale boy replacements are 99% complete, along with some material improvement projects. High school playing field, I believe Dr. Freed and Jim talked about that. The high school locker rooms, that was discussed. The annual technology contractor notes, they're on the agenda. Also, the transportation on the agenda tonight, recommending, the administration's recommending keeping the same dollar amount for next year, and I believe that's also going to be coming up soon for the medical rates, which are going to be the same, I assume, from our notes, what you recommended.
Yes.
And that would basically...
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions? Um, current one is meeting on the 22nd of February.
Policies meeting this coming Monday.
I had security needs on.
Okay, thank you. Any liaison reports?
Yeah, just, DAC, Karen. Met on March 12th, and just a couple of things that impact the, impact us as that. We did discuss the fact that Dr. Freed was discussing change in the calendar, and they, it did have some concern that they want to know sooner rather than later if there was going to be a change. My inclination is to reach out to the president and say that, at least tentatively, we should probably think in terms of graduation next year being the 22nd rather than the 18th, because they are at the point where they're trying to negotiate.
I think Mike, with the 23rd next year.
Mine's the 23rd. Tuesday, the 23rd. All right. Yeah, unless there, unless we think there's going to be any serious opposition to your proposals, I'm going to tell them at least that's tentatively the direction we're heading. And also, on March 30th, DAC is sponsoring a school rock concert. That's always a lot of fun, so hope everybody goes to it.
What's time, what's time?
Actually, the school of rock.
Yeah. On the 30th, that's a Sunday.
Is it?
Yeah. Sundays.
This year it is, Mike, maybe not.
Okay, now I'll, I'll top the check for that. That was a deal, it's good.
Okay.
I'll check.
Yeah, I was moving at the CIG liaison.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have CIG?
No, right? No, I just, well, CRT, I stated that.
Yeah, so delegate, I'm sorry, delegate liaison, Mike? Anything for Mustangs?
I forwarded the concerns to the higher authorities.
Yeah, I can just comment, I've spoken to one of the co-presidents of the Mustangs about those concerns.
What were their concerns? How did you see a copy?
I, I don't, didn't know.
Do you want to give a, why don't you want to give a report? Do you want to give a report? What their concern?
I didn't bring the notes to give that report.
We just get a copy of notes, why not later?
I assumed I was going through the proper channels previously.
Yeah, I mean, I had a very positive conversation. They were interested in items such as the progress we're making with the new field renovation. They were also interested in the possibility of connecting the wave room with, I think, the fitness room, so that there could be better supervision between the two by creating a doorway.
Yeah, I know, and we get the finance committee meeting out, and I'd like to see the notes of, well, the Mustangs.
Okay, in the future.
They come from this administration.
Yeah, Mike, you don't have to write notes, you can just give a report at the meeting.
That's easier.
Yeah. Okay, so Mars County School Boards had a meeting on the 22nd, it was county association leadership meeting, and I've delayed this report for several meetings now, so I'm going to give it tonight. The New Jersey School Boards does have two task forces that were created about a year ago. One is a security task force, and the other is special education task force, and both task force will be reporting on their findings the end of the month. In government relations, some of what we talked about, government relations is moved, some of it had to do with the uncertainty of the budget and where our state aid would be. There is some, still some concern about the pension. Of note was a new law that allows five-year contracts with our staff and teachers. And there is, I think, a concerted effort on part of New Jersey School Boards, and I think there are actually some ears and trends in listening to do away with the administrative spending cap, as well as the superintendent salary cap. Whether the governor will sign, some legislation is yet to be seen, but I think with all the advocacy that's been going on on a grassroots level, people are beginning to listen. So please, we as board members should keep it up, and I would ask the public to keep it up as well. Just so you understand, the education law center, education law center reported that due to the state not meeting its state aid obligations for Montville alone in the past four years, it's a shortfall of $10 million. So by the state not fully funding what they're required to fund over the past four years, we have been shorted $10 million. Mars County as a whole has been shorted over $200 million. A couple of legislative bills that have already been signed extends the timeline for our budget, as Jim has indicated earlier on in the budget presentations. It moves the filing deadline for board members to the last Monday of July. Permits boards to adopt salary policies up to five years in duration. There's also a law that permits out of school, out of our school district due to a family crisis to remain enrolled in that district until the end of the school year. There's some debate on who would pay for transportation. There, we're required to provide instruction on responsible use of social media now for middle school students as part of the core curriculum content standards. And those, those were bills that were signed into law. were bills that were signed into law. So that was the cow. And last Wednesday, I attended Mars County School Boards meeting, at which there was an invited guest, Tracy Severns. Tracy Severns is the chief academic officer in the Department of Education, and Tracy is a very enthusiastic supporter of the park and the Common Core. And I think for those of us who have a great deal of concern about Common Core and park, her enthusiasm was infectious. It, it sounded like, at its core, common, no pun intended, but Common Core is a valuable way to educate our students, but I think there's a lot of work to be done. And it was obvious tonight that there's going to be many challenges that all school districts face. And by the way, at that meeting, which was representative of Mars County, a number, you know, in the question and answer period, same questions that were asked here tonight were asked by school board members to Tracy Severns. You know, how are we preparing our students to take an online essay exam? How are they going to manage the technology? And, you know, there's a great deal of confidence at the state level that it will happen through practice, and we are, this is a field test this year. So I just wanted to share that. That concludes my report for Mars County School Boards. Any other PTC liaison reports?
Karen, if I can talk to you for a second, that DAC report on the School of Rock, did I say March 30th or April 30th?
March.
I said March, I meant April, I'm sorry. April 30th is a Wednesday, and I said March, I apologize.
Karen, EPTC liaison reports?
Yes, Karen, S2 Lazar. The major announcement is that tomorrow, Lazar's going to be hosting a program in the name of Walk in the Park, unintended. It's to, serving to be an informational meeting for parents at 7:00 regarding the park testing.
I have a Cedar Hill meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah, Karen, you were Wednesday night, you were at the Mars County School Boards, I was at the high school for a PTC meeting, and I'll be very brief. I thought the tone of the meeting was excellent. If you think about a flagship school and the various improvements that have gone on, Mr. Stanford was there at the meeting, and various improvements, things like from the referendum of 2001, the dollars that we recovered. The locker rooms are finally nearing completion, the budgeted, potentially budgeted sound system, and the changes to the auditorium that we alluded to before, the athletic turf field that was placed in last year, and the potential new turf fields this year, the tennis courts, which were done a little while ago, and of course, the future media center. The people in the high school are very pleased with the upgrade to what was otherwise a pretty old Sheldon School. So from the standpoint of facilities, there are positive things. The individuals there did talk about the way Dr. Freed, you came up with the makeup days and various considerations that you had, as being extremely positive. And there was a discussion from Dr. Stanford, Mr. Stanford, about the proposed budget for the year, and also changes to the calendar. Being brief, there was a lot more discussed, but that was the gist.
Any other PTC liaison reports?
Just kind of following something that Matt was talking about, the improvements to this, the high school. I guess it kind of filters down, that, I was at the play this last week, actually, the kids in the play said that they had heard there'd be a budgeting, all improvements to the sound system, the auditorium, so, you know, word filters down.
That's very good, that's good, though. The kids were very enthusiastic. Okay, there are no more liaison reports, I'll open it up to the public for any items on the agenda. Okay, closed public participation. We are adding a resolution to the agenda tonight, that wasn't on the agenda. I will ask our, it will be under J4. I'll ask our attorney to read the resolution.
Resolve, on this recommendation of the superintendent, board hereby one approves the stipulation of settlement in the matter captioned Montville Township Board of Education versus Eric Halian, and Eric Halian and ZK versus Montville Township Board of Education et al. Packet number DC 7138-13. And two, authorizes the board attorney to execute the stipulation of settlement on behalf of the board and to take such further steps as may be necessary to finalize the matter.
Move the resolution again and again.
Thank you, Charlie. Second? Thank you, Mike. Any discussion on the minutes? Jay? Kay?
Yeah, I got a question. Case six, it says submission to the voters as well. We submit the budget to the voters, but seems to be fine right now. Like, am I wrong on that?
Let's see. Ah, I guess I need to change that, thank you. I don't know what that said. From the years-long dip on the budget. Submission to the Executive County Superintendent of Schools. That's all I wanted.
We didn't open it door tonight, we got this wrong. That's a bit too hard.
Any more Kay? M? N, Allison? Okay, vote call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Pollen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Mr. Moogrey?
Yes.
Mr. Marlin?
Yes.
Is it no?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Kim?
Yes to everything, however, I do abstain on the minute vote for February 4th.
And Dr. Corleone?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Okay, under general board comments, I ask Jim to put the workshop, and you, the board has probably, next year's workshop, the board's probably been receiving emails from New Jersey's boards about the possibility of us doing another workshop the way we did last year. I was wondering if there was.
They must be hurting, they've written to me about 10 times. I know you guys are getting the same very soon.
Well, the deadline is March 28th, so is there interest in doing it again? No, good, okay.
I think every other year would be good, Karen. We don't want to spoil it.
In that case, I'll open up to the public for items that are not needed. Okay, closed public participation, entertain us to a adjournment.
No, no, sir.